Super. All right, tonight is a planning board public hearing for changes to the comprehensive plan.
No, zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance? Zoning ordinance that have been worked out by the CEO and the comprehensive plan implementation committee. It is a planning board public hearing. The CEO and the comp plan implementation committee will explain what the changes are. If you have any questions, please direct them to me if you can, and we'll go from there. State your name when you ask any question. And go ahead.
Anybody that doesn't have a copy, there's copies right over there too also. Anything that's a strikeout is being removed. Anything underlined is being added. Anything is blue is going to be required by the state. This is the document that was adopted last year at town meeting, so it's stuff pulled out of that that's really already adopted through the town. We're just pulling it out of that separate shoreline book and adding it into the zoning ordinance itself. Yep?
The reason the comp plan committee, which is a subcommittee in the planning board, had to continue with this work was in March of '09, I think it was.
Yep.
The state came out with new guidelines for municipal shoreline zoning, which we had to fall into our pre-existing work. So the bulk of these changes are derived from state mandated work and a number of instances the committee chose to take some more protective measures, more safeguards beyond the state's understanding through a couple of examples.
If somebody has a question, just raise a hand. We'll slow down and look at it. Are the definitions, they're just expanding the resource protection definition? Aquifer protection district was added. That was not a requirement.
Do you have maps up on the wall if you want to ask a question of this text pertaining to that place here?
Under non-conformities, there was a little bit of text added here talking about the variance being granted. Not very substantive. Repair and maintenance, again, it's a non-conforming structure. This is allowing you to continue, maintain, replace, repair your non-conforming structure. Dimensional requirements, again, under non-conforming, a lot of it's going to be the same verbiage, just reiterated several times.
The material silent and do are derived directly from the state made. Just so you can pass up if you choose to work with the committee, the committee derivation versus the state.
Non-conforming uses, again, the definition's just been expanded out a little bit, including buildings and structures and the land thereof. The non-conforming lot that's being allowed to be used without a variance, some communities were actually requiring variances on the non-conforming lots. This is clearing that up a little bit. We've added the text, "Aquifer shoreline zone." The Green Book didn't have it, but that's all the DEP was talking about anyways, so we could probably highlight that also. Absence of road frontage, it's talking about the lot needing to be on an acting A, B, or C standard road, and the variance related to it does not involve lot size with road frontage in that area. And it directs you to the acting board of appeals for that. Non-conforming lots, if you've got two of them, if they're non-conforming, you've always had to merge them automatically. This is just clarifying the ownership of it. The new language the state is adding to that is if one of the lots are not non-conforming. The two lots that are continuous, one of which is not non-conforming, the owner of the same person, the effective date of the ordinance and the recording of the registry. Subsurface wastewater, basically if you can get a septic system on it, it's still usable and valid. That's as long as it has 100 feet of frontage and 20,000 square feet of land. So that's an exemption to requiring those to be merged together. It's the same text if there's a building on it or if there's not. Protection, assumption is if the ordinance is not going to work there. And again, the focus on the state here was in the resource protection in shoreline district. All required verbiage. It's a process through which the planning board can allow them the use if it's been discontinued, as long as it's less than one year, and that use was maintained for five Expansion, as long as it does not make the structure more non-conforming, it's a permitted Change of use, again, all state required language, as long as that use is not more adverse of an impact on it determined from the planning board, then they can change the use. Transfer of ownership.
Can you give an example? Can you give an example of that last one, Ken, please?
The change of use?
Yeah.
If you have a non-conforming use in the shoreline zone, automotive repair garage or something like that, it was in the shoreline zone, and the automotive repair facility is no longer used, it just goes back to a residential use, you're not going to go back to the automotive repair. It would run through planning board to see though if it was a landscaper business or something of that nature, and they could switch from there. So if you had an existing, so I guess if you went from automotive repair to small engine repair that had marina type thing or something, under better safeguards, upgrading, and if the applicant came in and had a lot of good best management practices he was going to use, and the old eyesore that was a safety hazard, an environmental nightmare would be cleaned up, you guys would be allowed to use that. The transfer of ownership, you can transfer a non-conforming lot from person to person. A lot of the verbiage banks are looking for and stuff like that. They get wary about lending on non-conforming structures. Again, just getting the words "non-conforming" in the text there and follow the state rules. Wastewater disposal, just adding a few words in there. Section 1411-2, the relocation, this is when you have a structure that is non-conforming, too close to the lake usually is the issue. You're looking to rip it down and rebuild it. The planning board has the authority of that. They put it on the lot within the best location. This verbiage is all in the vegetation that would need to be replanted where the old structure was. The things we've added is that a building permit must be required within 18 months of the planning board approval. Right now, there's no time limit on it, so somebody that comes in and talks to the planning board 10 years ago, we don't have a sunset clause on that. Similar to variants from the zoning board, those are only good for a couple of years, so this gives them 18 months to pull a building permit. Once they've got the permit, then they're all set to go. Reconstruction replacement, verbiage is pretty much all the same for what that first paragraph Basically cleaning up the best possible location. They've added this section in here, which is the 50% if it's damaged by more than 50% of the market value, which really isn't a lot for these structures because the value is in the land on the water, so 50%, if it's more than 50%, planning board has to go from best proposed location with that also, and they have one year to do that. The change of use for a non-conforming structure, the verbiage is all there, the state is requiring that we also look at tributary streams for those too now. Expansion of the structures in the shoreline district, this is cleaning up the verbiage that it's okay to expand it as long as it's not becoming more non-conforming, so we're not going to be getting any closer to the lake, but we can still expand on the backside and go up and things like that. The state again is adding tributary stream into that area, and they're talking how the floor area and the volume is calculated by 30%. B gets into the foundation underneath the structure, and the last part is language we've used in acting for years, and the state has actually implemented it into their document that is how we measure these structures is on the backside of the location on the uphill Conflicts with other ordinance, if one, the more restrictive ordinance will supersede. A lot of this verbiage we had before, but the state is plugging this whole area in. Basically, the municipal clerk is going to be the one in charge of the shoreline zoning map, the official map in the document. She'll stand, seal, and we'll have that for display here. Effective date, this is just the dates the commissioner is going to approve it, and we'll have the document back to us. Timber harvesting, state law works two ways on this, and they've put both options in here. It's pretty complicated when they're looking at a certain amount of time, towns, once a certain amount of those have reached that, then they'll go to option two. I forget what the exact number is on that, second day of the year. I think it's around 300 towns.
How does that affect us right now? What's going to happen?
We stay in the way we are. Oh, it's at least 252 of the 336 municipalities. I know when I talked to them last year, they were under 50 that had already adopted it. This is required ordinance verbiage that they're getting in here, so when it does happen, Article two, zoning districts, threw the district in there a couple of times. And then the resource protection, it's talking about the scale on the map, it's going to do the same thing for the shoreline zone also. Changes to the map, the whole process would go through, town meeting, up to the commissioner for DEP get approved, and then it would be implemented. Locations of districts, all this will be on the map, broken up into districts similar to the ones that are on the wall right here. Just mention if I go through some strikeout stuff and didn't pick it up. Minimum lot standards, these are some definitions we've had quite a bit under our lot area, but now is becoming bolder text and brought out into the ordinance itself. It's land below the high water line, land below the roads will not count as lot area The land use chart itself, we've added some numbers to the top of these, and on the following pages, we'll eliminate all the zoning districts and we'll just refer to the numbers. So that'll shrink that all down and just move everything forward. We're hoping probably to be at least a dozen pages shorter by the end. Automotive repair garages, it's some adding in there, some underlining that wasn't required by the state. It was not permitted in a couple of zones, and that's going down to conditional uses in the zones that it's allowed in.
Being made less stringent.
Being made less stringent. Docks and wharfs, they're just breaking out temporary and permanent, what's required for those. This whole section basically is pre-activity regarding utility poles, fire prevention, emergency operations, all that stuff's being put into there, septic systems being allowed. Essential services, parking facilities, the state's adding quite a few different definitions Footnote nine, this was all through the ordinances in about a half a dozen places, allowing two dwellings on one lot. We've eliminated it from the ordinances in several places and just put it here in the land use chart. So if you went back to, I think it's under residential. We've added a new line, two single-family dwellings on one lot. You look at the footnote nine, brings us to the back of the document, and all that text will come back in. So again, we've eliminated it throughout the ordinance and just using it on the land use chart. Article three, definitions. Agri party, again, these are just state definitions they've put in there. Aquaculture, basin area, basement, the shoreline side, they've added a little bit into that. Urines, just the state campground, they put some more verbiage into, cleaned up canopy. National use, cross-sectional areas of theirs, disabilities in there now, shoreline integrity, driveway, some of these definitions where it's broken up to outside the shoreline and inside the shoreline, just the stuff inside the shoreline is blue because that's what's required by the state. The other stuff would just be added through when Southern Maine Regional was helping on the document last year with the comprehensive plan. Emergency operations, that's a new one this year too. Floodway, forest management, forest stand, foundation, functional dependent water use, ground cover, harvest area, height of structure, used to be building height, I think, they've moved that in there. Home occupation, we've basically did a strike through with most of it and put their terminology in, increasing the non-conformity, that's your non-conforming structure, usually down by the water, but it could be non-conforming because it's too close to the street too. Arena marketplace, Monroe. High water lines, they're just cleaning up some of the definitions. The last time the state required updates to this was in 2000, so it's been about 11 years. They've just cleaned up a lot of the definitions through different court cases and stuff. Principal structure, no one's easy enough, principal use, public facilities, floodplain soils, recreational facilities, it's pretty simple, they've added campus trailer to recreational vehicles. Replacement systems, we added the word septic in there, that's the intent of it though, is a replacement septic system. Rivers, they've got their definition, we just added Salmon Falls to the end of that. That should be underlined, right? Just make a note on yours.
Not highlighted.
Right, not highlighted but underlined.
Why did you add Salmon Falls?
I'm sure they just had to.
It's the only river in town.
Yeah. Most of the state definitions have a couple of dozen significant rivers they add to it. I don't think Salmon Falls is on it, but that's the only one we have in town. A service drop basically is just the utilities getting into the places and being allowed to cut as you need to to get into the, you know, the service drops, bringing the electrical in and stuff like that without dealing with the timber harvesting regulations. Shoreland zone, they're just defining it's a horizontal measurement for that distance. Some timber harvesting terminology, the skid row and the slash. Streams, all perennial, intermediate, those were added at the town level, the rest of it is just state language that's been added. Structure, that's cleaning up with that verbiage is. Expansion stat, they're looking at at least 30% of the structure being started for their terminology. Septic system, easy enough, sustained slope, as in their timber harvesting. Tributary stream, they've added a lot more verbiage to what we've already had, and we did some striking out on that. Upland edge, we called it, now we've added the word wetlands to it, and a lot of the text to back it up too. Water corrosion, that's going to be timber harvest related. Wind firm and woody veg, you know, so. Brings us to article four, any questions yet?
Did you people have nothing better to do than come in here and sit in a nice warm building tonight? If anything, you know, if you have a question or comment about anything, just jump right in.
Article four is stats into the zoning areas. 4.1 is resource protection, and it talks about the state RSAs that dictate the resource protection, and whether the structure's over or budding docks and the actual location for it. We don't have very many structures in resource protection here, it's pretty much forested or wetlands. The purpose is explained a little bit more and the locations of it. Definitions, talks about the data for where it is, the waterfowl, the wading birds, the nesting and feeding areas also, and inland fishery, wildlife mapping that's required on that. The habitat for the species. Also floodplain would also be an area for resource protection, anything that's over the 100-year flood zone. Wetlands, two or more continuous acres, this was not state required, this is what the comp plan worked with Southern Maine, they came up with a sliding buffer, depending on the size of the acreage would require the buffer that would be needed around it till it got up to the state standard. 4.3 is shoreline zone. A lot of the text is the same, state's got a little bit of definition of the 250-foot zone, which is shoreline, and 75 feet around the stream is also shoreline. Dimensional requirements, we've dropped it from 90,000 square feet down to two acres is a little bit small and not much. Structural requirements, the word river's been added in there as a setback, somebody was just trying to make something work, I'm sure at one time. Minimum front setback, we've always called it street, it's wooded, it's front, 75 feet from the center of the right-of-way, we're eliminating the street and going from the center of the right-of-way. It talks about the 75 feet from the right-of-way, except for undersized lots of record as of March 9, 1974, including lots on private roads in which the case the setback's going to be reduced down to 50 from the center line of the right-of-way. Setbacks for side and rear, that all stays the same, we've added building hyphen to there, maxing out at 35 feet. Little Osley District, which is up on Balch Pond, is rarely shoreline zone, there's a little bit more stringent out there. Resource protection, we've added to it, I guess resource would be downstream out there, Hanson Pond and stuff like that. Same thing, dimensional requirements, we've added just per dwelling unit out there, nothing's really changed, same from the river, same cleaning up the measuring of the right-of-ways coming from the center line, and the reduction for non-conforming lots and lots on private roads. Building height added in there. I don't think we touched much in the commercial, except for the right-of-way. This is the, and it was in the last two zones there too, the two dwellings on one lot with the 200,000 square feet and the 350, we're pulling all that out, that goes into the land use chart with that footnote nine. Commercial B, very little change. Commercial C. Village. Village is about the same, just cleaning up the center line of the right-of-way for measuring those front setbacks. Transition district, the same thing, a lot of just housekeeping with this and adding the measuring from the center of the right-of-way and the reduction of the 50 feet for non-conforming lots and lots on private roads. Lot coverage all stays the same, rural is still the two acres and the 250, and center line of the right-of-way, except for, same thing, just measuring off that and the reduction of the 50 feet for non-conforming lots and lots on private roads. Critical rural, and then front setback, just the same verbiage has been cleaned up. Mixed use. Mixed use, I think we did very little in that too. Yeah, a lot of format changing. Aquifer protection district is all new and it was not required through the state. It's just locating the aquifer protection zone in the town off of the USGS map. Which brings us to section five. Any questions? Somebody wake up, Chip?
Yes, what, explain the aquifer protection district to me and what exactly is it going to do?
Recently implemented that trip was through the controversy of Holm Spring, neighboring town, Newfield. We wanted to defuse that controversy in action, and we thought that it would be wise if we delineated from the main geological survey maps, the area is hung on here as the, you can see this speckled brownish area, wherever that is, that correlates to a main geological survey map that indicates that there's a significant aquifer overlying those districts that would, that will yield, I think it's 10 or greater GPM balance per minute. So there was some conditioning of the uses that you would want to consider putting over those, those areas, whereas at some point in time they may be utilized for small scale if need be. We've talked about this in the past, if and when we don't take care of our water resources and the hope's along, for example, 13th Street and for example, 13th Street in, in Upper Mossam may need a-
A water supply system, a localized water supply system.
We wouldn't want to, in hindsight, have, have taken care of this aquifer in terms of the performance standards that we would have asked for, uh, the users that will be overlaying that, uh, aquifer. So it gives us some minimal level of protection for those areas where we know from state, um, materials that there are substantive aquifers.
Has the definition of the resource protection area changed much?
Everything in blue is new state. The true definition doesn't change that much. We've re- we've removed, and I was just looking for that. We removed where it was two acres of steep slopes out of the shoreline zone. That's been removed, which is a significant change.
Is that a state, was that a state regulation or was that?
We had, we had an option on that, Joe. And we decided after a few, a call, if you were in attendance with any of the, um, meetings we had in August with, um, I'm glad the lake community had raised some objection pertaining to a prohibition that we had initially, uh, decided to accept of not allowing, under a certain definition of dense development, areas that were, uh, three or more acres, less than 500 feet apart from one another in the, in the shoreline zone. The state gave us the option of on steep slopes of, of two or more contiguous areas. The state had given us the option of saying, uh, of disallowing the 30% expansion in those areas. We decided not to, uh, go with that option. Uh, the reason being, we had some questionable areas that, uh, the lady who was working with us at Southern Maine Regional said, "You could choose to prohibit expansion in all those areas, but we figured it was kind of a tempest in a teapot, and, uh, we didn't wanna go into that area of controversy." Whereas not much would be achieved by, other than, uh, maybe feeling good. We did retain other areas that are undeveloped, uh, by state statute in the shoreline zone that are of steep slopes, that do not have any residence on them. Those will be, uh, and we had no option on this one. We had to make that, those areas RP.
So you choose, so shoreline is only 250 feet back.
Yes, correct, yeah.
It's not 250 feet back from my major stream or river?
No, it's only, um-
The body of water, 10 acres or more?
A great pond, 10 acres or more, yeah. But we did change, uh, we bring it up here on the page, in the RP. 4.2 is the section. The state standard for, if you look on change 40, Joe. Top of the page, there are 4, 2, 2, 3, 4. I think that's what it is. 4, 4, 2, 3, sorry. Land areas of two or more contiguous undeveloped acres in the shoreline zone with sustaining slopes of 20 degrees or greater. That, that's state language that we did not meddle with. But on 4, 2, 2, 4, uh, the state threshold, where it says wetlands of two or more contiguous acres. The state had a threshold of 10 acres here. We looked at our maps, did this article of streams. We looked at our maps and said, number one, two acres is a large body of water. And we looked at our maps and saw that many, in many instances, we have wetlands of, uh, well, that's probably 10 acres or bigger. There are some wetlands contiguous directly to our great ponds that feed and access filters to our great ponds that are smaller than 10 acres. And we figured, uh, those deserve a certain level of protection, but we didn't want to get into the controversy of pushing back 250 feet. So John Moore, in his wisdom, said, "Let's have a sliding scale of buffer based upon the ratio of 10 acres at the state level yielding 250 feet." We wanted to start ours at 50 feet buffer for two acre water. So we worked out a little table. It seems to make sense when you look at the map and see what wetlands are feeding substantially to this recharge areas to our great ponds and, and the interest of maintaining those as protected areas.
Well, that makes sense, because they, they, they are part of the lake.
Yeah.
You know, they may have taken motive on it, but it's all, see, they're putting it in the wrong.
Well, while we're on that point of, of just a substantive, and these, in my mind, are the two most substantive things that the committee implemented in terms of greater safeguards beyond the state's minimum standards. The state, uh, only mandated, uh, here's a good example up here at the top of, uh, Upper Mossam. It's good, uh, this is square pond. The state only mandated stream buffers of 75 feet on second-order streams. This, this, if you can see this diagram here where you have a forked stream.
In the screen top.
Uh, two, two intermittent perennial streams bleeding into one, uh, perennial stream flowing directly into the great pond. Uh, by state definition, that, they wanted that entire system protected with a 75-foot buffer. We looked at our map again as we did with wetlands, saw that we had many first-order streams of significant magnitude, uh, that flowed directly into our great ponds again. We said, and you can see there are a number, I picked them out early this evening. There's a good eight or nine that flowed directly into the mouth. I'll pick them up here quickly to deal with me. One, two, three, four.
There's a lot of, that's very, very, very wide.
Well, we did it in the interest of safeguarding the water resource.
The, the state doesn't, the, the, the state makes these laws a generic law and it's supposed to apply every square foot in the state domain, and it really doesn't.
Our town is growing and the usage, uh, to which our lakes are, are being put and the density around them is increasing.
It's a density, but what's happening is people live near the year round. And, and you know, it's, uh, sooner or later.
So they seem to warrant a higher level of protection than, than we were. So that's why we did that.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody? Anybody? Anybody from Cable Land? You guys have nothing else?
Nope. We, we have a meeting again on March 17th.
7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock, for the remaining two sections of the audit.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you, folks.